Village Board of, alright, that's right. I'm calling the Village of Cross Plains Board of Trustees, meeting of April 25th to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hartman?
Present.
Trustee Branton?
Present.
Trustee Brunner?
Present.
Trustee Borthing?
Present.
Trustee Paul Makowski?
Present.
Trustee Kettlebator?
Here.
President Linkham.
Here, the stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're at public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue. Please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents. It may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noticed on the agenda. We have anybody that would like to speak? I didn't see any names on the internet at all, nothing? Alright, so we're gonna move on to number five. The Honorable Jerry Gertz will be swearing in our newest police officer, Matthew Hudson.
Up to you.
Matthew, you step forward. Chief, if you'd like to stand with him. A little closer. I have a bit of a vested interest here because you may end up as bailiff in my court, as many of the officers do. Please raise your right hand, Matthew. I, Matthew Hudson.
I, Matthew Hudson.
You solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Wisconsin.
The state of Wisconsin.
And the Village of Cross Plains.
And the Village of Cross Plains.
And that I will to the best of my ability.
And that I will to the best of my ability.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the offices of police officer.
Execute the offices of a police officer.
For the Village of Cross Plains.
For the Village of Cross Plains.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Officer.
No. Well, welcome. Thanks everyone.
Alright. We're on number six, consent agenda. Upon request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Do I have any wishes of any trustee to move any of them? Andy?
I don't want to move anything, but I just want to make a comment. I don't know if there's a, before we make a motion to accept, if there's time for discussion or not.
Sure, after someone makes a motion, we second it, then we go to discussion.
Okay, then I do, I do not want to remove anything.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, discussion. Andy?
Yeah, I just would like to see a better process for approving trustees to various committees. Maybe just a little bit more transparency with how that process happens to the public. So that we understand why people are being appointed to various positions. And, you know, potentially that maybe the public has input on that as well. So that's all I gotta say.
And that I am addressing at, under my report, so I will cover that. You betcha. Alright, I have a motion second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in full, same. So move. Right, village reports. So village president, I got a couple things for us. I wanna welcome the new board members. I'm looking forward to this year, it should be a busy year, but a fun year and a really a one that I think a lot's gonna happen. I want other good news, I just want to let everybody know and we'll send you out a copy of it. The appraisal, I received the appraisal today for 1601 Bourbon Road. It came in at 399,160. So it's over what we put the offer in and you'll get a copy of this. I'll have Brian send it out to everybody. Brian's been notified, he's, he's happy that it's gonna be used by the village. So there's that, we'll be moving that forward, we'll be probably talking about, yeah, I'll have a number of options and how we're gonna pay for it in May meeting. So we'll have a discussion then. So I just wanna, as for the new members and just kind of a reminder, I just wanna kinda go over how we do meetings, just so everybody knows. If you wanna speak at everyone, just kinda get your hand up, I'll give you a nod and then I'll say it's Andy, Cody, Michael. And that's how we'll can continue to do it, so we're identifying and we don't walk over each other. I wanna remind everybody when we're in closed session, anything said in closed session cannot be discussed with anybody outside the board. So we gotta make sure we have that. I would caution people when we communicate, if you communicate outside on a meeting that's been scheduled, if there's more than four people, that's considered a walking quorum and we're in violation of the open meeting rules. So I would suggest that if you have information for all of us, I don't have a problem with you shooting it out, but we can't have the response where people are talking to each other without it being noticed. If you wanna come to plan and speak outside of the public comment, it's important to let Brian know. So we can also post that there could be a quorum at the plan meeting. Because there's three of us on that, so if the fourth, if the fourth person, we ran into that, Michael was able to make comment at the public comment, but I didn't allow him to speak during the meeting because that was, we would've had a quorum. And again, we didn't notice that. So if you're gonna wanna be part of the discussion at plan, let Brian know so we can notice that there could be a quorum of the board there. The other thing is with private emails in Texas, just remember if you do any type of business, as a trustee or village business, that's open to open records. I would recommend if people contact you through your private email. When you respond back, copy your village email, that way it's captured and you don't have to then worry about an open records request. It's all be kept on there and try to do as much as your business on the village one, because we automatically save those as required. So that's just for everybody, a little bit of a reminder. Alright, on the appointments, how our ordinance works, it's chapter two, is that the village president makes the nominations for positions and the village board confirms the nominations. At times, I have asked for preference from other board members. But I also feel if I do that, there should be a reason in that I would really take it into consideration. I worked in an environment where they let us do preference, but everybody knew what my assignment, I knew what my assignment as a captain was before they asked for preference. It was just going through the motion, I don't believe in that. This year, I had very strong feelings on where I wanted to put individuals for certain reasons. So I made those appointments. Alright, that, that's basically was the, the system. So it, I don't think anything would have influenced me another, in another direction. It, I feel with, this is a critical year. And if you wanna know why I made your appointment, I'm more than happy to discuss it, but I'm certainly not gonna do strengths and weaknesses of members of the board on, on anything like that. So I don't know if that answers your question, Andy. You know, in the, I, I would think maybe, you know, like I say, and I go either way. I just didn't want, I just don't believe in telling people you have a preference if you really don't. I just don't think that's right. So I'm, I'm being straight up with you. Alright, that is all I have. Village Vice President?
Excuse me, just a reminder that May 5th is around the corner and it is the chambers doing, in the Chamber Alliance, and a bunch of them are getting together to do the wine walk, the trout days and the garage sale days. And then also the chamber and then we're getting together on chicken barbecue for Memorial Day and we will do the parade again, just a reminder.
I think, I think it's May 7th.
Or May 7th, yes.
Okay, because third, I think May 5th, the garage sales will start.
Start, so they start, yes.
Yes, and then the big events, May 7th.
Yep, and we're still looking for volunteers for the chicken barbecue.
Alright, thank you. The other thing is, we will vote in May for Vice President. That's kinda how we do it, so, just so everybody knows. And they're really in charge of the ceremonial and trying to keep us up to date on what's happening in the village. Alright, other trustees, anybody have a report there, they'd share? That is, Michael?
Can I just make a comment about what you said about the plan commission and the quorum? Could that just be a standing issue on the plan commission, like at the beginning of the page? So that if a trustee wants to appear, we don't have to notify, it's just always there? So there could possibly be four?
Can't there just be? I guess I'm missing, for us to, it, we would have to notice a board meeting, not the plan meeting commission is noticed. But if you have four people, that's considered a quorum for the board, so we'd have to notice that there's a board meeting. And if you remember how, if you go into our agendas, you'll see where Bill, if we were at a public forum, he would send it out that there could be a quorum of board members at that meeting.
So, yeah, I, I thought before we used to notice something on our meetings that there might be a quorum just always in attendance at a meeting and we didn't have to notice it as a board meeting. I mean, if we go back and look through some of the old meeting packets, because I think on some of those, it used to actually say something like that, like actually on them.
It does. What we posted on the board side, we can talk, well, I don't, we got a big agenda ahead, so we can see what we can do. I hear what you're saying, I'm not just sure, sure legally what, how we have to do it.
Yeah, I, I think he just said, there might be a quorum, but we can't take an edge, that's basically what this little word's, there can't, the village board won't take an edge. But there might be a quorum and it was just noticed.
Alright, village administrator? Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanna celebrate the fact that no more May is coming up, literally, as, as time does. And the desire of our sign for no more May is getting recognition across the country. So Andrew Brandt, like kudos to you, people in Virginia are using that as their sign now. And so it's, it's going like wildfire.
Yeah, I saw it on the news.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good, thank you. Okay, Brian?
Okay, I just have a couple quick items and no more May was one of them, so I'll cross that one off. I, I have an upcoming meeting in May with the board at the Gateway to the Drift List to talk about the Black Earth Creek Trail Project. So I will share information on that as it becomes more readily available as the next steps in that. I recently had a meeting with the Cross Plains Chamber of Commerce, that was very productive, some good ideas were shared. And so I will be in communication with them moving forward on some future collaborative efforts with the village. I wanted to share a real quick update. We spoke with Jerry Gray recently, he's doing better, he's feeling better. So things are starting to progress, we have no timetable for return or anything, but I just wanted to share that it sounds like he is doing well. All things considered, following his surgery. And then last, we did receive notice that from our village engineer that we may have to have a special board meeting in June to discuss the safe drinking water loan closing. So more will be shared as that becomes available as well. But right now, the tentative date, I believe, was June the 13th that we were looking at for a possible date of which we need to schedule some type of a special board meeting in order to get that paperwork completed timely. Okay, that's it for me.
Do you want to follow up or not?
I was just gonna say, then the board review June 6th, I wonder if they could have it?
Oh, board of review is June 6th?
Right before plan though. So board review'd be from 5 to 7, plan's at 7, but I wonder if they had that paperwork ready, if we could have like a five minute meeting? You know, I don't know, just thinking.
Well, we can look into that, I guess. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that way you don't have to come in the two weeks in a row.
Right, okay, we'll look into that.
I just thought of that.
Are board members allowed to participate via Zoom or not?
Sure, but we have to have a quorum here.
Okay, physical quorum?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Alright, Chief, we have you for other reports, I take it, with the annual police report?
Yeah. I'm just gonna stand up here. Those are just copies. And not color, same. More to answer questions, more than anything, but I. I'm just standing, okay. Alright, we'll just kinda go through it page by page, if you just, Brian, if you'd help me out by moving, moving that up. So first page, this is the title page, and then the second page has just our contact information for the department, table of content. And, and I'm not gonna bore you with, you know, you guys can read the chief's message and you all should've had time to see it, because I, I sent it out. I've maintained our, our mission statement, which is what our department created when I took over the department in 2020. The oath and the code of ethics all stand the same. As you see here, the village officials have a little bit changed and they will change now. So, which reminds me to welcome both of the two trustees. I look forward to working with both of you. So next year, your names will be on this and, and hopefully some good partnerships on, on different things. As we continue on, you've got the structure chart, that is, is how our structure is right now. Brian, are you able to bring that all the way down? That's fine, no, that's fine. So that's the oath and what of ethics, and then sort of the members. And that's where I'm at. So that's our structure, how it stands right now for our police department. Obviously, four officers, we do have an administrative assistant, lieutenant detective, and then myself as the chief, so that's the structure. Going down a little further is the, so what I did was I kinda put down what the employees are working on besides. So these are, these are tasks that we, each one of us has within the department. Some of the, some of the additional stuff are things that each one of us is certified in or represent on certain committees, as you can see, I'm on a lot of committees throughout the county. Just trying to get our name out there as far as the police department of Cross Plains and, and having a voice in all of those committees. I've been appointed to most of them. And then, and then if you keep going down, you'd see our employees as well, what, what they're kinda working on. So for instance, Kim Ready, he is on a task force for innocent crimes against children. He's also on the stolen vehicle task force and the traffic safety commission, and he's also our TASER instructor. And if you keep going down, you'd see kind of a similar list for everybody else. And soon I will be adding Officer Matt Hudson to it and giving him some of our, divvying up some of those roles. Next, you will see the budget. So obviously, if you, if you scroll down to the, to the next one, it would give you the total budget, but this is just separated into the police department budget without including salaries and wages, which is all governed by union, union with exception of lieutenant and myself. If you go back up, I'm sorry, Brian, will you go back up to that other page? I, as you can see, if you look at the bottom number, we, we returned back about $15,000. So that also includes the, the programs that we were authorized to have. So that's really what I wanna focus on here. The body cam program, we were given $8,000. It came in at $7,694, so we came in under budget on that. The less than lethal shotgun program, we really came under budget, we only spent $2,000 on that program. We were able to refurbish our current shotguns and turn them into less than lethal, rather than going out to buy new ones, which saved us a lot of money. So we're glad to do that and they worked and everything worked out well. The other item on there would be our TASER program. So that again, we were, we had $15,000, it was granted for that and we came under budget on that. So everything's working well. You might notice, we don't have our body cam program yet and we don't have our new radios in yet, which is part of next year's budget. The reason that is, is because those technical pieces of property, just with the times, we are struggling getting any of that stuff. So they're hold, hold up, the last I heard is the body cam program should be in place by May, we should finally get our, the, the equipment, everything is set up, we just need the, the actual body cameras and they're stuck somewhere in, in freight. So, so we're still working through it. Our radios, they don't even have a date for me, that's how far behind we are. So right now, we're scrounging for batteries and things like that, but we are, we are making do, so we're okay. Alright, if you continue down, Brian, then we're gonna get to the monthly incidents. You've probably had an opportunity to look at those things. High calls would be assisting the fire department, keep going, please, Brian. So we continue to see, you know, the same kind of trends, there's nothing major alarming except for our thefts are way down, which is an testament to my staff and the fact that they're very proactive, being vigilant out there, probably stopping things before it's even happening. But if you look way, way down on the four, on the third page or fourth page, I think for you, our calls for service are up almost 16%. So we went up to about 2,600, 2678. If you remember, and I don't know if you have it jotted, but in, in 2019, when I took over, we had 1,600 cases. So in two years' time, we've gone up nearly a thou, over a thousand cases. So it's been extremely busy, my staff has done a really good job, stayed on task. If you continue through that, Brian, all the way to the significant events, I'm sure some of you have had an opportunity to read some of our significant events. As you can see, these are just a little bit of what we've been doing, I just kinda highlighted things that I thought would be of interest to you. All of things that we've, we've seen, trends that we're seeing, things that we've been solving. You may have questions on that, a lot of it I can't divulge, it's still in investigation mode or in process or real mode. So I just gave you a little bit of that information. Wanna take a breath right now and just ask, does anybody have any questions so far before I move on to projects and programs? Andy?
Yeah, you have included, I was looking through the, the crimes that you just, I mean, put into the, into the notes. So I was wondering, what is your vision for the future needs of the police department of Cross Plains? Based on the, the crimes that you have highlighted there?
I, I think it's, to be honest with you, we are at a point where, and you'll see in our, my projects and programs, I'm spending a lot of time of my own time, I, I'm not even getting a vacation, because we're so busy that I, I can't really start my chief of police duties till after I'm handling calls. I'm, I'm handling just as many calls as any of my staff and then some, because since I have a lot of experience in investigations, I have, I have the help with that. Right now, we have actively, we have 12, 12 to 15 active investigations that are not even listed, we haven't even finished them. So I have to spend some time helping them and then, and all the staff. So we have the patrol, I have to help with that. So a lot of the paperwork stuff, sometimes I find myself after my end of my shift, as I'm staying here, you know, three, four hours, sometimes 100, 100 hours in a pay period, even more. So that kinda stuff has to come to an end at some point, because I can't, I can't sustain it, it's not sustainable. So, and I know that, so we, we're working on a lot of projects that I'm hoping, once I get those things accomplished, that if, you know, then I could have a little more flow. The other thing that, that's been a disadvantage this year is that I've been down on officer pretty much the entire year. I had an officer on maternity leave, I had another officer that broke his ribs, I had another officer that was out on COVID. So I mean, we've been down and so, but I, do I predict that we are at a, we are at a point where, at some point, we need to start making decisions, especially as, as the village is growing, to have a chief just be strictly administrative and investigation stripped, the investigations? You know, what does that mean, adding another officer or two? I, I don't know, but we, we're, we're at that point. If you can, we get compared a lot to Marshall, Marshall PD has 10 officers and they maintain a 24 hour coverage. So, you know, if, if, if and when we get to that stage, we need to start thinking about that. But there obviously is a, a significant cost to that and there's a lot of things going on in the village. So we are, we're, we're okay, alright, I, I, yeah, it could be easier, but we're okay right now. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions?
I'll make a quick comment while you're catching your breath. I definitely wanna welcome Matt to the team. I wanna thank you, Tony, in the couple of years he's been here, I think there's been a lot more outreach partnership and kinda focus on community policing. And I think one of our commission members has a pretty good idea that we're gonna learn to engage more residents in the public safety program. I'm hopeful we can kick that off either this summer or national night out. I think the more people and residents we engage, because I think it's always easy to complain about someone's driving or someone doing this or that. When you look at it, most of the time, that's within our village, you know, especially if it's off of 14 or off of P. So I'm appreciative of the work you're doing, I think we're definitely in the right direction. Looking forward to Matt being a part of it too.
Can I go?
Yeah.
Alright, so just to round it off, projects and programs, so I already talked a little bit about the tasers, less than lethal body cams, those are the things that we implemented. We're gonna be replacing the radios, like I said, I'm, I've gotta pay for them this year, but I'm hoping that we'll get those sooner than later. Things that we're working on, obviously, is National Night Out, we've been working on parades and different community events. The two initiatives there that I started when I took over here, Thanksgiving initiative and Christmas initiative are well received by the community. I, I don't see us stopping that, I, I think the community likes the fact that we, we try to help those that are, that are in need. So we'll continue those, we've been doing, I've been doing a lot of de-escalation training for a different, I just did the bank, not too long ago, the state bank. And I've been going all over trying to teach people how to de-escalate situations, especially now with people being out and about again and, and socializing the way it is. Our drug tech takeback was very successful, we let, this year, we were able to return, turn over 100 pounds of drugs. So that, that is very good, so it doesn't sit in people's homes. We've done multiple traffic initiatives, you guys have probably seen us doing those, where we work on, you know, crosswalks and then I bring the whole staff out and we work. The other, last month, we did that initiative and then like an hour and a half, we had 17 violators. I mean, that, that just are not obeying the traffic laws with regards to cross rob. So, working on that, we continue to work on the new SRO and the, and the transition to more of a community resource. We're taking into account a lot of initiative with regards to the students, making sure that their voices are heard. And so we're, we're kind of, it's a multi-tiered evaluation process, we're still working on a rubric, which we hope to have completed by this fall, so we're still working on that. Even though we've been down, patrol was able to maintain 87% coverage, so that's been our staffing level based on our coverage. So we, we're still 87% of the time, someone is on duty. However, that's come at a cost, like I said, it's, we've spent 230 hours of overtime, I was able to maintain and, and, and keep us under budget. That may be an area that in the future, we may need to explore, because if we're not gonna hire people, I, I'm probably gonna need a little more money in the overtime budget. 210 hours was what I worked extra above and beyond my time. The national average is 2.5 officers for every thousand residents, which obviously that tells, I mean, you can do the math, we should have 10. Those are our increases in cases. All of our officers were, were able to maintain their certification, which is, I mean, we, we have to and otherwise they're, they're not gonna be employed. But I, the point I wanted to make there is that even though we were short and we're only required to train 24 hours, we actually trained double that and, and staff knows that I really am interested in them being highly trained. So I sent them to a lot of extra training this year. Future initiatives, if you would go, this is the last page, bear with me. Um, future initiatives, if you would go, this is the last page. Bear with me. Future initiatives is we're, uh, I'm working really hard to complete that emergency operation plan. Um, I've been given six months by my committee uh team to kind of uh meet with everybody individually, find out what the rules are and and work uh individually and then collaboratively to get this accomplished. Uh, my hopes is that by next year, we could do a table exercise with the emergency operation plan, probably start planning some of that toward the end of the year. Um, my hopes is also to update, to continue to update the department policies. Uh, they were quite extensive and some of them were quite old. Um, and so I, I'm just about done with that. Um, the next thing that I'm working on is to update the field training manual, which I have asked uh Scott to partner with me and also uh I already included Matt. Matt's going through field training, so he will be uh helping us figure out what can be done better, what's best practice. So together, I think as a collaborative effort, including uh Matt, who, who has a little experience in law enforcement, but just that common sense approach, I want to have a better field training manual. And so Matt's gonna help us with that project as well. Um, we're gonna update the website and Facebook. We've already done some of that, but I I think we can even do better. Um, and that's another area that I think Matt can help us and he has experience in in those areas. And I, and I know you do too, Cameron, so I may be reaching out to you as well. Um, other big things is this restorative justice court initiative. So Middleton PD, along with several other agencies, have gone to a restorative justice court initiative and we are following right along suit with that. Um, what that means is that any juvenile that is in trouble in our community, we will first look to do something restorative rather than than right away issue citations or um or or send them to a a referral to the, to the DA's office. Uh, what we're finding and and through data is that a restorative practice is just a better avenue to start with. Um, there are obviously those times where restorative is not gonna work, but we've partnered with YWCA. It's working well in Middleton. Uh, we believe it'll work well here. So I'm in the final stages to get that accomplished. Uh, the Traffic Safety Commission Initiative, they did a study in a survey uh last year, September, and uh what came out of the survey is that Bourbon Road has speeders, Church has, Church Street has speeders, Main Street has speeders. Nothing new for any of you. You, you all know that that's where we are hotspots. The other thing that I do want to complete this year is our Officer Wellness Program. I've got a good jump on it. I've partnered with Nikki. She's going to help me develop this program. I fully believe that we're, you know, we're in a really tough time because uh we can't, you know, even in this process with Matt, even though I got lucky um finding Matt, we only had fifteen applicants and I was able to cut half of those down in a day because they weren't qualified. And so Officer Wellness is important because we're taking on new officers and it's putting a strain on the already officers I have. People are retiring a lot quicker. Everybody's looking for money and it's because of where we're at. So I think it's important that we have a very strong wellness program for those officers that stick it out and and uh when they leave our department, that they feel that that they've accomplished something and um don't resort to violence on themselves. Suicide is is top in in our profession besides, you know, the the obvious calls for service. But um after the fact, a lot of officers take their lives and that's pretty near and dear in my heart and I want that to be a priority for next year. So I'm working with Chaplain and we're gonna, we're gonna have a good program. Any questions?
Hey Judy, then Andy.
I just want to actually thank you for the report. Every year I appreciate this. I know it's a lot, a lot of work. But I know you guys do a lot of work and they ask us, they do a ton, but this was, you know, I mean, we know you do a lot, but this does help explain. I appreciate it. Um, and that's what I want to say. So thank you for everything you do for us.
Thank you, Judy.
Yeah, my question was based on the Officer Wellness Program. I want to make sure that, you know, if somebody who's in the public eye can, can, there's a public teacher, just making sure that our officers have the ability to make sure that they're mental and physical, how to be taken care of. So I'm curious what you're giving in the future or least thoughts in the future initiative.
So we, so an Officer Wellness Program can go in many directions, but s- simple things like just having uh high building morale things like, so if you walk down our police department, you'd see uh that I have like a attaboy avenue. So anything that they do positive is hung up there. Some of the guys are kind of, you know, they razz each other and and good fun. But but I think everybody appreciates those things. But also on the serious note, just having, you know, uh car, cards in our bathroom, for instance, that, you know, that reminds them that there's help out there. You know, they're in there privately, they, you know, when they're in there by themselves, those kind of things. Just a constant reminder of those things, but also just having avenues to be able to um reach out to different resources. So my plan is to have a kiosk downstairs with different resources, different phone numbers, bring in trainers to train them on on how to deal with things. Uh, you know, we're in our, I mean, some of you, especially uh Jay, would understand, we're in a roller coaster. I mean, our brains are in a roller coaster. Some days you go from, I I just handled suicidal subject and then I came here. And so my brain's supposed to like shut off and and be ready to talk to all of you. And so it, it's, it's a lot. And then when you go home, now you've gotta be like a normal dad and a man and a mom and a brother. And so it's, it's going through all those fields that causes that chemical imbalance in your head. So having a chief like for myself, I, all of my officers, I know their, 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 you know, their bottom line, I know where they are. Uh, you know, so if they're, they're all over the place, it becomes an a, an alarm for me. But there's things that they have to do for themselves too. So giving them those avenues and those uh and making sure they understand that they can take wellness days. And I've already had at least one officer say, hey, I need a, I need a day off, a wellness day and and just be okay with it, you know, as a team. So. Okay, sad answer to your question. Okay.
Cameron? Um, I was wondering, uh, I mean, first off, thank you for the report. It's very helpful. I just got here, but but getting all this information was, was really great. Um, and with Officer Wellness, obviously, I want to make sure the officers are happy here too. Do we know how much uh the two hundred and thirty hours of overtime this year compared to the previous year? Is that up by a lot?
Not up by a lot.
Okay.
I would say last year was, I don't have a number in front of me, but it's around, it was in around the seventy-eight hundred dollars.
Okay.
Um, I did take a look at it. We didn't get to the ten thousand we did return last year or the, I should say the year before. This is last year's numbers.
Okay. Yeah, sorry. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Andy? Yeah, I was just wondering, um, you mentioned earlier about like uh offense deserving restorative versus punitive ramifications. And I was wondering if you could maybe talk about how you direct your officers in that regard?
So every case that comes to our department ends up on my desk. So I review every case. It doesn't matter if it's a vehicle lockout or whatever it is. We read everybody's reports. But a report like that, that would have some enforcement, I would review it. We'd have a conversation about it. Uh, we would look at, you know, at our records, internal records, see if this person would qualify. And then we would have, we would make a, a decision, you know, our officer, who's the one who handled the case. I mean, we can't dismiss them, right, or her. So I would have a conversation and see if this is going to be a restorative, something we can use for restorative. I'm gonna say, based on the last two years of me being here, ninety-nine percent of our cases would be, would fall under a restorative uh practice. You know, I, it's very unlikely. I, I, I live by the ninety-seven-three rule and ninety-seven percent of people are good people that sometimes make mistakes. Those people, you can almost always warn. It's only three percent of the people that you really have to, that really why we exist, right? So the key is to not treat the, the ninety-seven percent like the three percent, right? Is to actually have that restorative mindset. So staff knows that. I think, you know, as a partnership, we, we'd be able to figure that out pretty easily.
And the YWCA actually has a program where in Madison, where certain crimes, the tickets and stuff go to them and they're held in abeyance for certain things and then they disappear. And then there's a, another program outside of YWCA where the officer and victim and the suspect get together, they talk it over. Make a decision there and it moves on. So, so there aren't records of it. Uh, the arrest doesn't get logged into the computer.
It's just kind of giving someone an opportunity.
Yeah, it's to not have it on the record. It's not so much if they get fined or guilty or anything, just being arrested puts that onto the record. So that the whole restorative justice, just to try to get in there before that gets typed into the computer. So they're held in abeyance, basically.
Right. And and they're held to, I mean, YWCA, what they would do is they would, you know, you'd have to take courses, you'd have to, you'd have to follow a certain set of of protocol based on, you know, their plan for that person, individual plan. So as long as they pass all those things and get through all those, then, then that restorative practice would have actually worked. If it doesn't, then, then the punitive portion just comes back. You don't, you don't just get a pass, you know, it's, 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 you have to accomplish something. So what they found is that recidivism is way low with these kids that are successful in a program. So and that's what we want. We want to partner with that.
And then another one that was very successful was at Memorial. They have pure for it. So they wanted to find peers and peers decided what the the punishment was in it, you know? So it was very, there's, there's a number of models out there.
And we are looking at that to try to maybe do some of that here at our library, but I haven't, uh, we're still in the kind of the planning phases of it. The last portion of the planning phase.
That's my last question, which is just basically like what, what can we do to make your job better?
You guys do a great job. I don't, I honestly, this is, uh, I've worked for a few boards. I've not only been a police officer for a long time, but I've been on county boards and school boards and this is a very good working board. I don't feel like anybody who I had to approach has not been open-minded. Jay's easy to get along with, Judy. I mean, everybody here has been good. So I, I think, I mean, I understand clearly budget issues. Okay, so it's not like I could come here and say, hey, I need three cops and you're gonna go, yep, okay, go get them. You know, I understand that. Okay, we're trying to build a police department. We're trying, so I'm gonna do everything I can to, to keep us within the budgetary as far as I can. You know, I'm just telling you that for me, I can't sustain working two hundred and ten, two hundred and thirty hours. You know, I can't, I can't just sustain that. You know, I've got my own family and stuff to deal with. But you guys are supportive and I appreciate that, you know, taking the time to listen to me. And and I know I've called on, on all of you at one point or another and you, and we've got good conversations. So that's all I need is just communication. And that goes on return though. I, if something's going on, I, I don't, I don't want to hear about it after, you know, it's festered in your brains. I, I want to hear about it right away so we can deal with it, you know, that kind of thing. So I, yeah, I think it's been great.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'll be really brief. I'm just wanted to update. I mean, the open book got moved from April eighteenth to May seventeenth. It'll still be eleven AM to one PM online. And then I received the border review training video. Um, so we do need one of you to watch us and take an exam. So if you want to be that lucky person, let me know.
Uh, let her know by the end of this week, because if no one does it, then I'll do it. Okay. It's not too bad. Just try. Yeah, well, I appreciate it. All right, general business. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-one annual financial audit report. Yes, it is. Yeah, you can sit there. There's, just grab another chair.
So, good evening, everybody. There's some new faces here. So uh my name is Brett Hoffmeister. I'm an audit manager with Johnson Block and Company. Kevin Krasinski, he's the partner on the audit. Um, so we're here to briefly go over some information about your twenty twenty-one um audited financial statement. So we've got this board uh presentation packet. I'm not gonna go over the whole thing, just the first couple pages, uh, because there's a lot of information there. If there are any questions on any of the information here or in the draft audit report, just let me know. Be happy to field those. But I'm just gonna go through a few things here first. Um, so first page is already up there. Uh, it's just kind of a summary of the content of what's in your, your audited financial statement. So the things you'd expect to see would be an independent auditor's report, which is our report on the financial statements. There's a set of fund financial statements and government-wide financial statements. The fund financial statements, which I'll go over in a little more detail. Um, those prevent or present your individual funds. So your general fund, debt service, capital projects, and then your utilities, water and sewer. Um, the government-wide financial statements group everything up by fund type. So the governmental funds are grouped together, the business-type funds are grouped together, and those are presented on a full accrual basis of accounting. Um, so those fund statements are converted. Uh, your fund statements are more short, short-term. They don't present capital assets, long-term debt on the balance sheet. Your full accrual statements do. There's a set of note to, notes to the financial statements uh that has a si- summary of significant accounting policies and then a set of detailed footnotes um for significant account balances. Those are pretty standard. Um, they'll be in most ever, you know, see the same footnotes in most every village um or municipality. Um, some other information, um, we help with your PSC annual report. That due date got moved back to May first this year uh by the PSC. Um, we're probably gonna, since Jerry's out on extended medical leave, we're probably gonna ask for an extension there just to get some of the stats lined up. And then we also help with uh Form C, the municipal financial report for the DOR, uh, which that's due May fifteenth. That's pretty much ready to go. We just gotta hit submit. Um, so then moving on to the actual financial highlights on the next page. Uh, this is just kind of high level. Um, a few highlights, I'm not gonna go into any real specific detail, but for the audit, it's in draft format now. We don't really expect any changes at this point, other than maybe if there's any subsequent events that would need to be disclosed, things that have happened in twenty twenty-two that are significant. And we just have to add footnotes about those. I think we have more stuff, but there, there's always things that pop up. Um, our independent auditor's report will be unmodified. Uh, that means there are no material misstatements or changes. All the necessary information is there. The financial statements are in accordance with GAAP. So that's the highest level of assurance we can give in an audit and that's what you would expect and want to see. Um, so that's a, a clean opinion. Um, the page references on here are references to the draft financial statements. Um, but just a little bit about your general fund, I had an increase in fund balance uh about a hundred and thirty-three thousand, mainly because expenses were under budget for the year. So that pushed that up. Total fund balance was just under eight hundred and ninety thousand. Um, of this, about a hundred thousand is non-spendable, meaning the funds are in non-spendable form. Uh, most of that has, is from an advance made to the TIF to cover a cash shortfall. Um, there's an advance to the tip from the sewer and general fund. So that makes up most of that non-spendable fund balance. Once that's paid back, that fund balance will become unassigned. Um, your unassigned fund balance is one of the um numbers that we focus on when we're looking at financial statements for government, uh, because that's what's available. It doesn't have like a restriction on it. The board hasn't set it aside for specific purposes as committed or assigned. Um, your unassigned fund balance is about twenty-two percent of your twenty twenty-two budget at the end of twenty twenty-one, um, which that's right in the neighborhood where we recommend. We usually recommend twenty to twenty-five percent in that un- unassigned fund balance number. Um, mainly there, so that's, you know, three to four months of expenditures. Um, that's to help provide smooth cash flow throughout the year and just in case there's unforeseen things that come up, you know, like the flooding in twenty eighteen would be an example. A lot of that got reimbursed, but that reimbursement took a couple of years. So you kind of had to pay that out of your existing reserve. So having a, having a good fund balance on hand can be beneficial there. Um, the other thing with the general fund, when you look at the, the December thirty-first financial statements, there's a lot of cash in the general fund at the end of the year. That's because of the timing of advanced tax collections. So you start collecting for that twenty twenty-two tax levy in December. So at the end of the year, you had about eight hundred thousand dollars in cash that was collected for the next year. So it looks like you have a lot of cash at the end of the year, um, because you do, but that's just because of a timing thing, you know? That'll be used for the next budget year. Looking at your TIF, that has a deficit of about three hundred and six thousand dollars. Um, the TIF, it, it isn't uncommon to see deficits in TIF funds because of the timing, the way those work. You pay out incentives in big chunks upfront. You pay it back over time with tax increment. Um, so that deficit was covered by those advances from sewer in general. Uh, that's um getting paid back now. It had positive cash flow of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. Um, so that paid down that deficit and those advances, that's expected to continue. I think the way things are going, it'll be within the next three to five years that that deficit will be paid off, assuming the increment holds. Uh, that can change year to year, but um I know I've, you know, projected for twenty twenty-two should have another positive uh cash flow there. The other fund that did have a s- uh small deficit was capital projects. That's mainly a timing issue. The other fund that did have a s- uh, small deficit was capital projects, that's mainly a timing issue. Um, there are some outlays incurred in twenty twenty one, those will be paid, covered by the twenty twenty two debt issuance, the, the general obligation. Um, issuance there. All right, utilities is kind of the last thing I want to cover, unless there's any questions, um. Water and sewer are the, are the utilities for the dis- uh, the village, excuse me, um. Water, I just want to go over kind of your cash balances at the end of the year first, water has about a hundred and thirty four thousand dollars in cash. All that's restricted related to your debt sinking fund for the safe drinking water loans. Unrestricted cash was zero at the end of the year, but that was expected, and it was approved to borrow from the general fund. Um, so there's about sixty six thousand dollars from the general fund there, that'll be covered by that safe drinking water loan, once that's closed and you make draws on that. That cash will be paid back. Uh, sewer has about two point five million in cash. One point six of that about is restricted for debt sinking funds, um, so that's money you set aside to pay down your clean water fund loan. And then replacement funds for the plant at the actual treatment plant and then for the collection system. So that's restricted, the rest about nine hundred thousand unrestricted, there is a chunk that's been designated for future improvements by the, by the board. That's four or five hundred thousand dollars at the end of the year, and then the rest is just operating funds that are available. Um, debt balances, uh, there was no new debt issue for twenty one in the utilities, water had about two point three million, sewer about four point one. Nothing new planned for sewer that I'm aware of, um, but obviously the, the well projects are coming up, so that'll be a pretty big increase once that stuff gets going. Um, and then looking at your actual cash flows, how cash changed for the year, water decreased by about two hundred and sixty seven thousand. And that was expected, most of that was paying for those initial well costs for well three, so about four hundred and ninety thousand there was used. That should all be covered by your debt proceeds once that debt is issued, so that should replenish that cash balance. Sewer increased by about two hundred and seventy eight thousand, that was just through operations, provided that cash. Um, and then the only other thing there, there are new rates effective for twenty twenty two, that's step one of a two step rate increase. Um, step two, I believe will be effective once the projects are wrapped up, unless I'm wrong there.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, so there's a lot of information to throw at you. Are there any questions on that, anything in the, in the presentation packet? There's a lot of detailed information there that I wasn't gonna go through, because I know you guys have a busy agenda tonight, so I wanted to. Get you on to other things, but if there are any questions, we'd be happy to go over them if you have any.
Anybody have any questions for? All right, could I have a motion, please?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
All right, discussion and possible action regarding the specific implementation plan for the redevelopment of twenty one hundred. American Legion Drive is Tom on? No, and Sonia's not here, all right, so, uh, you want to take this, you want me to take it? All right. Okay, um, this has been going on, uh, they've been working on the building for probably a year now. I think it's come to plan a couple times, um, this is their, what you're looking at is their final. Implement plan with all the rules and everything to it, uh. Plan passed it, I, I don't know if you've had an opportunity. Um, I believe right now, I was hoping we'd know, I guess their meeting's in May with the county, right? On for fire, okay, so, um, basically what they're looking at is, um. At twenty one hundred, uh, Legion, uh, drive there, the bottom floor would be. Likes businesses like art businesses, like glass blowing, yoga, that kind of s- uh, stuff where. Um, it would be a consistent business flow. Uh, the second floor would be where they would rent it out for like meetings and weddings. Um, I think it has a capacity of about ninety nine hundred people, if I remember. I, I'd have to go through that, and then the top floor is residential, which would be overnight residential. And it can sleep up to six people, it's just a big room with, with that, they'll have a patio. Coming out from the side, which is a little different, the first time you saw it, it was gonna be a deck, but they went to a patio. And then on the back towards the post office, they'll make that a little bit larger, um, deck up on the second floor. And there'll be a canopy to the doors coming off of American Legion. And those steps are part of them are in the right of way, so what we've done is allowed them to put their canopy in the right of way. With the understanding, if we have to do something, it'll be at their cause to remove it and stuff, and then the sign out front. I don't know, Cameron, you got anything else you wanna? I mean, it's a, it's, it's a, I think it's gonna be a great business addition for across planes.
Uh, I don't have anything else, uh, based on what I heard at the planning committee, um, to answer your question, the main floor has a capacity of fifteen.
Fifteen?
So it says here.
That's the base.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one already. Ninety nine, there you go.
Yeah, that's right. You had me scared.
Yeah, I, I was too.
All right, um, I guess, does anybody have any questions on this? I mean, it's very detailed. Um, and we've met numerous times, uh, with Tom. Yeah, I guess they got some good photos of what it's kind of, kind of looked like with the awning.
So you're looking for a motion, correct?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion to approve, uh, the Pacific inflammation, implementation.
For the redevelopment of twenty one hundred American Legion Drive.
All right, do I have a second?
I will second.
All right, I have a motion and second, any discussion? Well, here's where, no, wh- what it is, is it doesn't affect this, if they're, here's the deal. If they're required to put sprinkler system, they're probably not gonna be able to go forward. Because we can't get them a water supply with the pressure they would need to operate, uh, sprinkler system. Um, but because they've done so much renovation, it actually falls to the county, and I guess it's May tenth, if I remember the date. Is when they're meeting with, uh, the company or. Well, I, I, the chief, and I think a lot of people feel that it's gonna, they weren't gonna need it. But, you know, they're not gonna invest until they know one way or the other. So this is just basically getting a plan, it doesn't affect us at all, because that's not part of what we would require. They just have to meet code. Yep. All right, uh, all in favor, say aye. All aye, same, so move. All right, number four, discussion and possible action regarding a zoning code amendment. Oh, did I skip? I'm sorry. Okay, three, discussion and possible action regarding zoning code amendment to. Section eighty four point six five, sub G, sub four, sub A, to eliminate maximum garage width. Ratio of fifty percent of the ground floor face up facing the street. I'll give you a quick history on this, because this was here last month, if you remember, we went from forty percent to fifty percent. Because of that, well, two days later, we found out that we approved. In scenic valley houses at fifty five percent. So the builder who had built a couple houses now was rejected after they were approved, you know, with the other two, so. Uh, I brought it back to plan, because I just want to make sure. Um, we're all consistent on this and that, I personally think. Um, right now, I think we'd have a hard time enforcing this, since there are so many examples where we've allowed it. To happen outside of this, this would not eliminate the maximum of forty two feet. Or the maximum of three garage, three car garage, so those still set in. All this is doing is removing the fifty percent, uh, the percentage part, and that has seemed to get us into trouble. There's just been one example after another where we have not enforced it, so. So, um, let's just open it up for a discussion and then we'll decide what we want to do. Andy, Judy, do you want to say something? Oh, I'm sorry. I know, okay, yeah, we. Okay, yeah, go for the motion and.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and move that, uh, section eighty four point one zero nine, require fence of no less than four feet in height.
We're on three dollars. The garage width. Yeah, I, I kind of misled you, I had to re.
I would go ahead and approve the motion to, uh, amend code. Eighty four point six five G four A and section eighty four point six five G four B to provide consistency. Uh, to, to the staff recommendation, does that gonna suffice?
So you're recommending to eliminate the percentage?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
Very good. All right, any discussion on this? Michael?
Excuse me, um. Yeah, this is just a very bizarre percentage, and with the approval. What I found incredibly interesting is that I went back and did a little bit research and looked into the covenants that applied to scenic valley. And inside their covenants, they actually say a fifty percent width is to be applied on all the houses there. So they aren't even abiding by their own covenants?
Well, first of all, and that's what we ran into with Veridian, you cannot change a zoning code through covenants. So those are illegal, and I don't know how they get in, because when we review them, I'm almost positive, I've never voted. On one that had that in, they do it after, which they can, because a covenant is not something we. We really improve, it's, you know, we do it the first time because we get a chance at it. But it's really not a, a village thing to enforce covenants. They can put whatever they want in there, and if they choose not to enforce it, that's up to them. Covenants are clearly done by the neighborhood or the association, so we have no say. So I got Judy and then Andy.
Such as if they say in their covenant, they can't have clotheslines, and they do do a clothesline, it's not, that's not up to us to police that, that's up to them to.
Yeah, no, you're right.
I mean, so like, if, if a covenant is a violation of our ordinance, then we intercede.
Absolutely.
But if, if their covenant is not in violation of our, I mean.
Right, those covenants that they have, and same with Veridian, are not enforceable, because they're, they were going against our city ordinance. Of code, zoning code.
Michael. And most of the covenants clearly state that if the zoning code is, they have to abide by zoning codes. I mean, when you read them, it says that.
Then we can place it, but if it's something that we, yeah.
All right, any other questions or? Cody? Yeah.
What brought this about? Is it that people were like, your garage is way too big? Or was it that your, the garage doesn't look right on top?
What, well, I'll give you a couple things, it originally was there, so the, the front of the house wasn't all garage. That was the historical part of it. So we had forty percent at the time. But back, when did Veridian come in and build your development, twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen?
Twenty six, sixty seven, seven.
Okay, sixteen seventeen, somehow they put in their covenants that you could go up to fifty percent. So most of the homes there at fifty percent. And I can tell you at Saint Francis, before that, I go around my neighbors, they supposed to be at forty percent, almost everybody with a three car garage. Is much greater, so there wasn't that enforcement, because times are changing. Now we ran into it again, where it came up last month, is Saint, uh, Creek Crossing, those are smaller lots. And it turned out that you could put in a standard garage, uh, two car garage. With the house meeting the forty percent, so that was the incentive to move it up to fifty percent. And now we find out, days later, after we passed it, that we allowed fifty five percent. So my feeling is, I don't see how we can enforce that anymore, and we still have the restriction of forty two feet. It can't be more than forty two feet, and it can't be more than three car garage. So we're just simplifying, and we're the only jurisdiction in the county that has the percentage. So that's kind of a quick history of it, so this would kind of simplify it for everybody when. Becky looks at the plans, all she has to do is measure the garage, and if it's forty two feet or less. And there's no more than three car garage, it's a go, versus trying to figure out the percentage. Any other discussion? Oh, go ahead, Andy.
I mean, we keep coming back to this, but, I mean, it's just like.
And I'm gonna take responsibility, because I think if we are okay things in, in violation of zoning, there's two things. We've got to either go back or change it to what we're comfortable with. Sure, that, that, it just makes no sense to have, because then it's gonna carry over, if you're not enforcing this zoning, why are you enforcing this on?
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm always gonna do that when I find that, because.
Can someone come to you then, now and say, those houses have it, so I want to get two stalls out of the way?
Of course you could, however, once we set it up, it's solidified in code at this time of day. Nonetheless, like, we need to make sure that as a board, we're trying to design. Our ordinances around human beings instead of automobiles, right, and instead of lots. You know, so like that, we're, we're making sure that we are developing. A village that is going to encourage people to live and walk and enjoy the space instead of. The alternative, which is driving their cars out of this regard, but whatever.
Right, and we want, I mean, we want ordinances that people can follow, you know.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, that's where we're at with this, right?
So is it complete elimination of this, what we want to do, or do we want to move it to a sixty percent? So that people can't go in and put a ninety percent, that's just garage and have a door on the side, and that's what faces the front of the house.
No, we wouldn't.
It'd be forty two, it'd be such a small, it'd be only forty two feet, right, the garage can only be forty two feet.
Yeah, but the lot frontages in the Brittany neighborhood are sixty feet, you have a setback, you could do a forty two foot garage and a. Ten foot front door, technically, you could, that would be allowable. Well, yeah, but do we want to allow that?
Well, here, here, can I just respond?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
You don't always make laws for the, the outliers, you make laws for the general, right? And if there's an outlier, then there's an outlier, but. To, i- if you want to do sixty, I mean, we, I don't know if anybody would go to that, it's possible. I, I just don't understand why we're doing that, I mean, we've got the forty two feet, and that's what we, easy to calculate. Cameron?
This is a funny deja vu, because the planning committee had the same exact circle of, well, there's this outlier, and what happens if it's, you got a long lot, and it's the whole. And just back and forth, and I, I think ultimately where we landed is, like, housing fashions and fads are gonna come in and out. People are gonna want bigger and smaller garages, and I guess I'm not really sure why we should be there imposing, you know. If you're gonna do a garage that's ninety percent and you have a tiny door, I mean, your house isn't, I mean, you're doing yourself a disservice, because it's, it, you know. You're gonna hurt the value of it, I, I don't see why we have to, uh, you know, get all wrapped around the axle on these edge cases. Planning committee did the same thing.
I was just gonna point out, these two stuff divisions do have design review committees, so the plans have to be approved by a group of people, so if you get a. Big garage and a little door, they're probably not gonna approve your plan.
Yeah, that's the covenants, yeah.
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 But that's the whole point, is that, that's why we're here right now, in this moment, trying to decide what is. What, what, what is the bar we want to set?
Our zoning ordinance is how we define how we want our village to look, is essentially what your zoning ordinance does. So whether or not you wish to remove this and depend upon a committee, uh, for the development, or whether or not we wish to. Set an ordinance that has more power over what the committee does, is basically what the question is.
Just whether it's Endress investing in our community with some of the parking spots and some of the extra meetings, I just. Would like to make some things easier, I think taking the percentage out makes it easier, and it's still very palatable. So I'm gonna be in favor of that.
All right, let, let, let's do a.
Well, I was just gonna, I was just gonna make an amendment to see where it went to the, to the motion that's sitting.
I'd rather just vote on this right now, and if it votes down, you can make another motion.
Can I at least hear Mike's?
Oh, I was gonna make an amended motion to. Switch the fifty percent to sixty percent of the maximum. Switch the fifty percent to sixty percent of the maximum on garage uh frontage of a house.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Second that.
I would second that.
Okay, that's gonna be, we have a first emotion on there to amend it.
What's a friendly emotion?
Nope, there are no friendly uh amendments.
Okay.
We have to do a substitute for that, which you can do, but I'm, what he's saying is right now the motion is to eliminate. The percentage. His friendly emotion, well, not friendly, his amendment is to not eliminate it. But to up it to sixty percent.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure it's it's a different. All right. Yeah, that's. So are you making that? Yeah, I was. All right. And are you seconding it?
I am seconding it.
Doesn't matter. We're on a separate one. So we're gonna vote on this. And if it passes, then the original uh uh motion changes. If it fails, the right, the. Regular motion stays the same. So right now we have.
I had to do it to you.
Um amended uh motion to change it from fifty percent to sixty percent. All right, roll call vote please.
Trustee Paul Kowski.
Yes.
Trustee Harmon.
Yes.
Trustee Ford.
No.
Trustee Brunner.
No.
Trustee Brad.
I have a question. Does that get rid of the feedbacks with forty-two feet?
No, no.
Which is just the percentages. No.
Trustee Calbert.
No.
No, motion fails. So now we're at the original motion, which is just eliminating the percent. It still keeps the three car garage and the forty-two foot maximum. Roll call vote please.
Trustee Brunner.
Yes.
Trustee Brad.
Yes.
Trustee Calbert.
Yes.
No.
Trustee Harmon.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. All right, very good. Now we're on four. Yes, yeah, discussion and impossible action regarding zoning. Uh, code amendment to section eighty-four point one zero nine swimming pool standards. H enclosure to amend the minimum height requirement from six feet to four feet. And do you want to make that motion since you started it? All right.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve section eighty-four point one or nine change uh to require fence of no less than four feet. Height maximum eight feet in the height with no less than four feet from the pool head as recommended.
I'll second it.
All right, so we're at discussion. Any questions on this or? All right, let's do a just a voice uh uh vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. So move. All right, number five, we're gonna actually break this down uh each one of those individually. Uh, because they're all reloaded, uh all related to the zoning coal code amendment. Discussion and possible action regarding a zoning code amendment. To add parks and conservation. A number one, amend eighty-four point two five sub C of the village of Cross Plains Code of Ordinance. Regarding conservation zoning district. Do I have a motion? What what page is this? Do I have a motion? All right, uh, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, uh, Mike, do you wanna answer questions and explain each one of these? Because I'm pretty sure I'll probably mess it up. Well, the question, why don't we just, why don't you tell everybody, give a breakdown on one, what it's really changing?
So the the biggest part of.
Eighty-four point two five sub C, we're talking.
So I think that's page two oh nine, is that right? Where it talks about. Changing it to community garden repealing. But this is the one doing eighty-four. It's they're they're out of order in the packet.
Right, they are. They are out of order. They're correct.
We're we're on the changing the conservancy.
It's the eighty, it's eighty-four point two five. Hang on a second. Yeah, it's the one that says uh con- uh conservation zoning district. And then it has some of the changes. So it's like uh adding community gardens, eliminating active outdoor recreation. Non-resident accessory structure. So it's just amending that part of the ordinance.
Correct. And so that's what's being amended is.
Oh, yeah, okay. Very good. You got it up. Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Discussion, go ahead.
Well, so I have a question here because. What we're. What we're changing. Isn't what's red lined up there. What it says here is not what's going on there. I mean, it says section two is being changed to community garden, which it is, which that's just meaning outdoor recreation is being changed. So the numbers get.
Michael's looking at page two oh nine. He's comparing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but but, okay, the amendment is just to change that whole thing. You don't, we don't have to care. We're not changing each one of these. We're just looking at the very top. It says section eighty-four point two five sub C. So that's, it's a general thing. We're not doing each of these red things.
Well, but isn't this on page two oh nine, is that an ordinance to amend section eighty-four twenty-five C? And it says what we're doing inside that subsection is what page two oh nine is. This is actually the ordinance that we're voting on, right? See, it says those three specific things. We're adding in the non-residential accessory structure. Under as a accessory structure pursued by use. Says we're repealing two and turning active outdoor recreation into community garden. And I don't understand why it's saying that we're repealing six because. That, this is where it gets confused because if you go out to the village website, six already says campground and I thought they wanted to put that in. That's where this isn't jiving up with the current ordinance. If you go to the website. What's weird is that if you go out to the village website and you download chapter eighty-four in section eighty-four twenty-five, I don't know where the planner got that. But this actually says campground is a permitted conditional use inside of conservancy. I just went and downloaded it a second ago.
All right, let let's, I don't want, we got too busy. Can um, I'm gonna make an amendment to postpone this. Item to the May meeting. This is.
And there were a few other.
Yeah.
confusing things.
Yeah, we we need to clean it up. I hear we're. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. So number one is being moved to the next meeting. We gotta clean that up, all right? It's, you're right, that has to meet on what we want. I mean, it it just, okay. We've moved it to May. That's something we're gonna have to talk with. Sonya. Yeah, I and I I can, I know why it happened. The numbering's off, but let's, we can talk about that later. All right, let's go to number two. Let's see if that one is okay. That would be the creation of section eighty-four point four two of the village across plains code of ordinance. And this is where we're actually making a separate zoning of parks.
Yes.
Okay.
So that and.
Because what the, how this all came about is that we found that all of our parks, open space conservancies, well, in any area that we have. Was technically labeled in our zoning code as conservancy. So that didn't really allow for any uses of active recreation inside our parks due to our zone.
Right.
So we, what we had tried to do and what we tried to work through was how to change. You know, each of our parks as parks and each of our conservancies as conservancies.
And and just so you know, we haven't gone down and list, made that list yet. Right now, we're just trying to set the ordinance. So this ordinance is basically giving us an opportunity to put some of our land in a zoning that's park and recreation. Can I have a motion, please?
I'm make the motion that we accept creation of section eighty-four point four two of the village press lanes court of order.
I'll second.
All right, great. I have a motion in a second. Discussion.
This is also where I have a confusion in terms of things might not hooking up or meeting up correctly. If you look at, now I'm uncertain. Inside of the packet on like page one eighty-eight, there is the ordinance for the creation of parks and rec. And if you pull down and on page one ninety-one, there's a red lined, all red where it's coming in. And I don't know why that's there, but the two documents aren't the same. If you look at section E, you have personal antennas. As a conditional use, whereas you pull up inside the ordinance, the antennas are in D. And you read the documentation, it sounded like they wanted the personal antennas to be accessory conditional use from what the plan commission said. It's like you're having these two dot. I, yeah, I'm not on there, but what they were talking about. Yeah, but it's like this, the way that it's presented is the way I think. Like conservancy and everything else is zone, but it sounded like a plan. They wanted to move personal antennas to conditional uses. And not permitted by right, which is what the, which is what the red lined version afterward does, but that isn't the one that's. The ordinance that we're proving. If it's eighty-four forty-two doesn't. Do you see what I'm?
I I see what you're saying, but I think this is just saying. My understanding, this ordinance is saying this can happen, but not if it's. If it's conditional or automatic, that you'd have to go to the table. Yeah.
Well, this should match the table is what I'm saying. Anything in here that's conditional use, the table needs to match it or else your your ordinances are in confliction.
So you could change, so you're saying the table that act out.
I don't, see, I guess I'm not, I'm looking at the red, which is, I'm looking at the actual ordinance. That's all in red.
But that isn't the.
I don't.
Up of page the one ninety, one nine. What I'm saying is that page one eighty-eight through one ninety is what we're voting on. We're not voting on the one in red. If you read the packet, it doesn't. It's, they're not the same is what I'm saying. This. See, that's page one eighty-eight. Yeah. No, if you pull down, I'll just show you. If you pull down on that page and you go down, okay. Go up to where it talks about.
I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
One has it in E and this one has it in D.
Yeah, they're not matching up and that's, and when you read it, it sounded like you wanted it to be. An accessory use, like they aren't in, or you wanted to be the one to be a conditional use. So I don't know how that if, I didn't even go and look at how that affects the table that we're voting on because. These words need to match that whole table of season peas or else the whole thing isn't like.
No, eighty-four point two five has been moved to May. I I I'm about right.
Yeah, I think.
Listen, we just need to go and so she's got to get it, get this right.
Okay, so you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I I clearly understand where you're coming up right.
And if you read what she wrote, this isn't like what was written, isn't.
They all.
No.
Yes.
All right, it's not, you know, I just noticed. I just noticed.
I'm gonna make an amendment to postpone this uh number two.
I'll second.
Well, the problem is I can't amend because the one was for two. I'm gonna do that next as a straight one. So. I'm, right now I'm ending to postpone this to the May one. It's been second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. I'm gonna make a motion to take number three and postpone that to the May meeting. All right, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. All right, number six, discussion and possible uh discussion and possible approval of. Village donation to Trout Day's event. Does anybody have, know what they're asking for or what it's for or anything?
This is from last week.
Yeah.
You didn't want to, you didn't want to save the five hundred dollars for the.
I recall it being towards.
We said five hundred bucks because we wanted to see your money.
All right.
Very good.
Donate five hundred dollars.
You know.
I'll I'll second.
Okay, discussion, go ahead, Mike. Well, um, I would suggest, no, no, but no, no. I am, and there's gonna be a couple items. I would suggest that we take it out of salary savings. Yes, we'll do a, but and it's gonna, I make in that, I'm gonna be doing that for a few of the other ones too. For this year, we can do that. I don't know who.
Or the Lions, like you didn't want us doing it, right?
Oh, no, no, no. It's a donation to. That's what.
Yeah.
And it's trout days. Aren't they kind of in charge of that? Lion.
Like, to me, I don't want all of a sudden the organization start coming. I like it that it's a service. It's bringing people in and we should have something out there.
Okay.
I get it.
Okay, can you make an amendment to change that for the five hundred dollars to go to port?
Yeah, just so I will amend the five hundred dollars.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, any discussion on that, Andy?
Yeah, I mean, like, it just sounds bad to say that we're gonna take money out of salary savings and put it to porta potties. For, I mean, like.
Why is that bad?
I don't know, man, because the 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 money should be there in earmarked for the salary increases.
No, no, it it's because we had a vacancy at the administrator position.
Sure.
And the police officer position.
Sure.
That we didn't pay salaries, so there's a salary savings.
Great.
And that can be used just like any other line item to move it to a need that you have within the village.
I I'm sure there's other places we could probably do it for. I will support it. I just want to say I don't.
Well, give us a suggestion on where else you want it from.
The general fund.
We, that would be an option, but at the end of the year, that money is gonna go back to the general fund, so. I I'm not really sure.
We're talking about five hundred dollars. I think it's a principle in my mind that that I'm working with here.
Well, let's just, we will, let's change, we'll do a second one on that, but let's, right now, what we, we're getting confused. We have to amend the original amendment to designate the five hundred dollars to. Porta potty. Yes, all right. Any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. So now the amendment is to give a donation. To the Lions for five hundred dollars for porta potties. That's the motion. Any discussion on that?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So you have to remind me, did the Lions come to us asking for this money to have porta potties is what it was? Or they requested it from the village and you were like, you have to pay for them or whatever? Do we provide porta potties for other special events for other organizations? At village cost?
And bear park for the game.
Not not a one on.
So the reason I'm supporting it, I probably wouldn't except for it shows the lack of amenities. And park stuff that we have for that park, for Bear Park. We are letting things. For, not honestly, fall, but we're we're not keeping up. And these events are important to the thriving of a active community. It's why we need to do the municipal building and the police station. It's why we need to find a way to fund wellness or some kind of indoor thing up by Bear Park. So. I mean, I'm very conscious of the fact that we don't do this for other organizations, but I'm also conscious that we've kind of let some things slide. And that it's a benefit that is put on by a lot of volunteers and I think five hundred dollars is the least we can do and they're gonna handle the organization and the renting.
And if it was just the regular trout day, I also probably wouldn't support it, but we have the wine walk. You have a number of events coming on that brings a lot of people here and we need to let people have the ability to use a restroom. And I just think that's part of a village responsibility. Andy?
Yeah, I agree. I think that we should be doing a lot to support trout days and five hundred dollars seems so miniscule compared to like. Compared to like the return that it could be, and I'm just shocked by the fact that it's only five hundred dollars. Uh, and we're just trying to give people like free places to urinate. Like, it just seems a little bit crazy to me. Um, I think as a village, we should be putting up more money, um, to help support this. Um, event because it's the only thing that we have that draws people to our community every single man. So I, I would, I would, I would like to see more support from the village as far as financial is concerned.
Judy and then Doug.
I totally agree with Andy and the reason we went this route was we did not want to be responsible for the Porta Potties. That's why we felt like if we donated some, they, they can be responsible in case they get tipped over, whatever else was our big thing about it. Otherwise, because I think that is our responsibility to give them a place to go to bed. I mean, really, I think that is very. Um, and then for the chamber to pay for the Lions to pay for five hundred, it's a lot when you think about this is a, this is a fundraiser for them. So if they have to take out the five hundred dollars or a thousand dollars right from their pocket. You have to do so much to make up for that. So I don't, I don't think they, they should have to pay for it. I do think we should have to pay for that as a village.
All right, let's, uh. Take a verbal vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. So move. All right, number seven, uh, discussion and possible action regarding scenic valley development blasting. Plan, uh, if you remember about a year ago, uh, when they were, uh. Redoing the lot forty-five up there, they discovered that there was quite a bit of rock left there. So they were interested in removing that material. And, uh, the permit that you're looking at or the plan is exactly. The same requirements as we had Wingra. Who did the blasting there prior to that and who continued to do it farther down that mine area. So that's what you're looking at right now. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the permit as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, I don't think it's a permit if I'm correct. It's a plan.
It's a proposal or something.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, if, if you, if you don't mind, if you just say the plan, I think that's how we have it worded.
And I'll second it again.
All right, very good. Any discussion? Go ahead, Michael.
So the engineer is gonna be looking at this. It sounds like there'll be other considerations or taking into.
Well, they're following the same plan as when Wingra does it, so they go and talk, talk to all the homeowners. All the homeowners have the opportunity to allow them in and they'll photograph their basement, their house and everything like that. They get notified when a blasting is and when they're all done with it, they'll recontact all the owners and see. If there's any concerns or anything like that and they have insurance for that. So it's, it's pretty much the same thing that those people are dealing with already for years.
Right, but yeah, they're making sure that vegetation stays, et cetera, et cetera. It sounds like they just.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good.
There, there, if, if you've been up there, you see where the slopes where they filled in. Now that's gonna be removed temporarily so they can blast the stone and then it brings it back. Yeah. All right, any other? All in favor? All opposed, same. So move. All right, number eight. Discussion and possible action regarding the compost site lease. I'll give a little background on that for if you remember, um, we used to take it out to Garfoot there. There was a farmer. She allowed us to use about an acre and a half. We've been doing that for many, many years. She was interested in selling it, so she asked us to find another spot. I was given a lot of farmers' names, uh, from a number of people, uh, knocked on a lot of doors. There are a couple, uh, farms that were willing to do it. But there's, since we opened that one, of course, the DNR has an incredible permitting process. So it really restricted where we could look. Um, one of the farmers, uh, came up, uh, and agreed that. He'd be willing to do all the spreading and everything. All we have to do is drop it off at the farm and he'll take it out to the field by doing that. We don't need to get the license and the permitting because under state statute, he's exempt. He can put stuff on his field. Without a permit. So what we'll be doing is taking our yard waste. Over to Otter Creole Road. There's a farmer there. We'll drop it off there and then he'll take it, take care of it from there. You have a three-year lease, uh, that's the longest he'd want to go. So we've got a three-year lease. The cost is about two thousand dollars more than what we're paying now. But no labor and rotating it, spreading it and all that. So I think it's a pretty good wash. Uh, just so you know, this to me is a short term. The finance committee is now looking at. A spot or trying to develop something long-term that we actually own it. We've contacted Black Earth and they're kind of in the market too, so we might try to do something jointly with Black Earth. So. We're working on a long-term. This is definitely a short-term solution.
Do you need a motion to say, to accept that, um, the lease between Dave and Lauren Yelp?
Yep.
For, um, for the village compost site lease?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
All right, any discussion?
Michael, uh, just reading this, it talks about. Uh, where was it? Removing woody items and leaves. How, what do we do? What are we gonna do with like? The tree branches that they chip? Is that considered a woody item? Do we have to take those? Doesn't go where?
Give that generally, there's enough farmers that want that for Betty.
Okay, well then are leaves included in this? Can we take leaves to this farm?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure because it's.
What we'll have to do is we'll have to spend probably a little bit more time taking, you know, making sure there's not litter in it. Like and rocks, you know.
Okay.
And, and again, the big branches, sometimes they end up there. So we'll have to do a little bit of policing, but we had really. Pretty good response with the separation of leaves and other yard when we did that experiment this last fall. So I. I think we'll be able to do it.
So this is like grass clippings, leaves.
Yard waste and leaves, yep.
So then crazy, like what about a pumpkin? Where we just spent pumpkin?
Yeah, we go there. Yeah.
Okay, I just making sure.
Yep, no. All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. All right, the next cup, three, I think are all pretty much tied to increased water rates and the well, so. First one is discussion and possible action regarding resolution number twenty twenty-two. Is that supposed to be twenty? The XX or we just haven't labeled it yet? Okay, declaration of official intent to increase water rates in accordance with the PSC final decision. Fourteen fifty WR one oh four. Oh, good.
Jay, do you guys want any update on this one?
Why don't you just give us a quick, uh, overview of exactly what we're passing?
For sure. Yep, so, uh, good to meet everybody. My name's Evan Chambers with Town and Country, working with, uh, Brian Berquist as well. He was unable to make it tonight. So you're stuck with me. This first one is a resolution that the DOA asked for, which is a, um. Commitment that the village is telling the DOA that they will be raising rates, um, in accordance with the second. Rate increase of that final decision that Brett alluded to earlier. So you guys, you saw the rate case, you saw that there's a, um, second rating or second water rate increase. DOA in order to close on the loan for the well project has asked that the village pass a resolution. Um, stating their intent to abide by that increase when the time comes at project completion.
All right, thank you. Why don't we go ahead? Do I have a motion, please?
I will motion to approve. The declaration of official intent to increase water rates in accordance with the PSC final decision. One four five zero dash WR dash one zero four.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. All right. The second one is discussion and possible action regarding resolution twenty twenty-two XX. Appointing authorized representative to file application for financial assistance from the state of Wisconsin. Environmental Improvement Fund. Go ahead, Evan.
Yep, the next two here might look familiar to some of you, um, because we are doing a. Safe drinking water fund and clean water fund loan for the upcoming Brewery Road project. As a part of that application that's due at, uh, June thirtieth, the DNR requires these next two resolutions be passed by the village. Um, so that first one is, um, making Jay the authorized representative, uh, for. The submittal of the application. I mean, we're, we're doing all the work behind the scenes, but then Jay's name is Jay's name will be on. As the authorized representative to submit the application on behalf of the village.
Okay, do I have a motion, please?
I motion to approve the resolution appointing an authorized representative to file applications for financial assistance from the state of Wisconsin Environmental Improvement Fund.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. Number eleven is discussion and possible action regarding resolution number twenty twenty-two XX. Declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures for safe drinking water loan program project. Do I have a motion?
I will motion to approve a declaration of official intent to reimburse expenditures for clean water fund program and safe drinking water loan program project.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion, a second discussion. All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same. All right, thank you very much. You have a good evening.
Thanks, guys.
Yep. All right. Number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding archive social contract for the village website, social media backup. Brian, you want to talk about this, please?
Sure, um, so archive social, um, this was brought up as a, uh, topic. Um, Chief Tony, when I first arrived, let me know that this was, um, a service that was available to municipalities. Um, and in short, archive social is a social media company that will take snapshots and record. Anytime there's an update to a village website for commentary, a village social media site for public comments. And, uh, municipalities and especially law enforcement have found that this is a service that is required. Um, and is recommended, I shouldn't say required, rec- strongly recommended. Based upon the fact that when there are open records requests. Any extension of a village social media or a village website is subject to those terms. And if you're not recording when and if somebody is posting something on your social media. Within the, the village, um, you are not in compliance with open records requests and subject to penalties as a result of that. And, uh, law enforcement has, uh. Found that when people make threats through social media and then somebody wants to. See what that threat was, if it hasn't been retained or recorded, um, you could be held liable and, and face repercussions for that. So this was the recommended, uh. Uh, social media archiving, uh. Company, uh, of choice that have been used by a number of municipalities around Wisconsin. Um, and I received a quote from them, which was included, a prorated quote for the rest of, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Um, and then, um, they would have a, a new full year annual, uh, rate, uh, for twenty twenty-three if we so chose to go with them.
All right, Judy?
Judy.
Sure, I'm gonna do that however you want to do it.
I'll make a motion that we accept the contract with, with the archives.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion, a second discussion.
So the cost that I see in there now, that's just half a year, then is the next year double that, then is that what I'm thinking or? The twenty-nine eighty-eight, that's what I'm asking.
The, the twenty-nine eighty-eight is the regular annual cost, correct? He's prorating it from a March first, um, adoption for twenty twenty-two through the end of this calendar year.
I'm still a little confused in what this is protecting us from. Is it when someone like comments something on our social media site? And then deletes it and we don't have any record of that because it lives on Facebook?
Correct, so anytime, anytime someone posts something, the village is in, uh, essentially responsible for. Keeping and retaining a record of that because it is being used through our media source. Uh, whether it be the website or, or Facebook page. So in situations where there are. Threats made and then deleted subsequently, if we're not able to furnish the record of what that threat was. You could be held viable for repercussions if, uh, we do not and have no abilities to present that, that record.
I, I guess, uh, ma- maybe Chief Tony, you can, you can help elaborate, just, I, I don't know, it seems. Like, I understand we have to be responsible for the stuff we post. That makes total sense to me. But it makes less sense to me that we're also responsible for the comments people place on those, like what happens if someone went to like a public. You know, board and posted a threat with paper, you know, like, you know, and then they took it down, like, how, like, how would you police that? I guess that's what I'm confused on.
I, I think it, it's, it's not so much the policing that's important. It's the whole thing that we talked about, the open records part.
Right.
And an open record is not just covering what you produce.
Okay.
But it's what other people produce also. That's why I talked about the email. If someone sends you an email on something. You're still responsible for maintaining that as a village representative. That's why I said copy, send it to your work one, because we automatically save it. That is the same thing on social media. You still need to capture all those and keep them and I'm not, you know. It used to be three years, but now it might be seven. I'm not sure, but it's very clear for states. So I think what this does is capture. The social media part of our website. If you call someone on the phone or you write them a letter, a letter would be, but a phone call is not under open records. Cody, so is this basically? Oh, I'm sorry, Andy Cody, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, is this basically just like insurance policy? Cause I pay like twelve thousand dollar a year for my house and thankfully I'm covered because three thousand dollars is kind of smart money.
So, I mean, I, Jake could probably answer this pretty easily with open records. So open records is anything that we are posting. Whether even if you're posting an event, you still have to be able to reproduce that for at least seven years. So even if you posted. And we've got trout dates going on, you know, and all of a sudden that generated some, some conflict of some sort. But even just discrimination, let's say that another entity is like, well, you guys aren't showcasing us and they were to say. Or make a record request of all of our events, you still have to produce those. Anything you put out on social media is producing. So I had, I went to the chief's conference. I actually was able to talk to a couple attorneys there that talked about social media. And, uh, they said if the only way to, to really protect, uh, uh, entity like ourselves is to not have social media. Because everything you post, you have to be able to reproduce for at least seven years. So, so to answer your question, yes, it's kind of an insurance policy. Can you still get sued? Yeah. So so to answer your question, yes, it's kind of an insurance policy, can you still get sued? Yes, right? But uh at least we can then produce it, and it would put the onus on Archive Social because they're the ones keeping track of. They're archiving all our records, so then it becomes kind of their responsibility to produce that stuff for us. And so we're paying them to kind of hang on to that. So for example, Middleton PB was had an officer going through all their social media, taking snap. Snapshots of their social media and saving it. Well, that just became so tedious because there was so much exchange, so much information out there that this just made no sense. And it's so easily searchable, so if somebody does make a request, you could easily search for that data and not spend some of the time. It's well worth the money, not only is Fitchford uh Fitchford's using it. D County Sheriff's Department's using it now, uh there there's a list, we're on City of Verona. So there's a lot of entities and Archive Social is kind of. And kind of the leader in this area, so they're kind of uh really good at it. And so that's, you know, it's coming, it's it's the funding. I if if I could just do it myself, I would, just because I think that just for the police department alone, it's beneficial, but. Um it's state law, so I mean, it's something we can't circumvent and 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 that's how people are socialized now. It's it's all social media, so we need to protect ourselves.
Andy?
Yeah, uh Chief, you just said it's state law, can you expand on that, please?
State, it's state, I mean, the state law with regards to open records is pretty clear, pretty much anything that us as a government. Uh produce, we or anything we write out, with exception of maybe a phone call. We have to reproduce it and we have to maintain it, we have to retain it for a certain amount of time. I think most records now are about seven years, so even a phone call, if we record that phone call, we have to retain it, it's now an open record. So uh pretty much everything's an open record now, I mean, even our anything right down and any emails for sure. But even our reports, um e- everything we we do, we have to be accountable for it and we have to be transparent. And 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 people have the right to inspect it, as long as it's not protected by a by some type of protection, which, to be honest with you, is. There's a very fine line between, you know, accountability for an item and actual protection of that item.
Then follow up, what what have we been doing up to this point? So like if somebody wanted a record from seven years ago?
Oh, no, 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 those those are, oh, I'm sorry, I oh, let me correct that. We have, we have hard copies of all our records. So so we're not changing any of that, this is just for social media.
Sure, and so, yeah.
All the other retention plans, I mean, we have everything on our server, uh we double check that, we triple check that.
Okay.
Uh we have it all, all our records are retained, I mean, that that's not an issue. This is social media because we cannot control what other people do or post on our social media.
Sure.
You know, and and let's say, let's say somebody posts something, for instance, we posted something, hey, we found a dog. Uh on the street and then all of a sudden I got a person posting, yeah, that dog's been loose two two hundred times, it should be shot. And 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 then the dog gets shot and then now now we've got all these issues, but then they deleted it, we're still responsible for that comment, even though they deleted it. Because we created the original post.
Gotcha.
So we're responsible for everything people post on our post, does that make sense?
Yeah, sure, so.
Doesn't seem fair, but it's.
It's it's broader now, anything that comes on our site.
So this is the fee to have a social media presence.
No, this is the fee for them to archive all our social media stuff.
Like if we didn't have a social. If we didn't have social media, we wouldn't.
Yeah, we wouldn't need it, correct.
This is the fee.
Yes, this is the fee uh to for them to archive it for us.
And art and they archive this fee covers twelve accounts, so it's more than enough.
I think that was my question, so when um when they do, like when Becky does something with the village, that will cover that one too, so it's not just yours. It's the village ones or whatever else.
It's all of us, I think.
Yes.
We counted and there's not twelve counts.
Right.
And I don't think we can get to twelve counts, I mean, there's some agencies like UW has a lot of accounts, including Twitter and all of the other stuff. It would cover that too, but we're not anywhere near.
Okay, good, that was my big question, thank you.
Michael?
Do you know the number of records per month this covers one point five thousand? Do we have anywhere near that that happen on a social media account?
That seems high, but.
A month?
Per month, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know, I don't know if there's a bunch of comments going on on all that.
No, that's that seems pretty high, that's that's a lot, that would be a lot of comments.
So. Uh, yeah, so now I would, yeah, so this just covers village owned accounts. Is what it is, it's because we. Yeah, okay, just because like I know with the brewery road thing, I know that the notice for that got posted on the village website. And I. But then I know that there was a lot of chatter going on on other sites, but we don't own that, we don't need to cover that about.
Yes, no, that's on our, just as we, whatever we created and whatever's posted on.
Hours, okay, just because I know there was a lot of stuff, but we also, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we can't.
If somebody grabs that and puts it over on a different one, that's not our response. All right, just making sure, because I know it kind of went around a few different places.
But if if someone from across the plane shares that, the direct department shares it, the police department shares it, then.
Whatever was shared and whatever was mentioned on that shared page is is but not. So uh let's say, let's say Bobby, for instance, shares something on her personal account, that's Bobby's deal, that that's that's nothing to do with the police department. Whatever she shares personally is outside of of our realm, we're just protecting government accounts, something we have to reproduce.
Right, but that means that like a village employee shouldn't be sharing some other events on a different Facebook thing because we can then can't cover. Those open records things, like something official.
Becky will make a post on our page and then she'll share it to the CP Grassroots page, she'll share it to the.
So she, yeah, that's. She can share it to wherever, her her it ends right where she shared it. Whatever they make comments on those pages, that's their responsibility, we've just shared it, we're not sharing comments.
If the government owns the account. Or produce that, you're responsible for maintaining for the records of it. So once we shoot it to friends across planes and then they have a list or somewhere, that doesn't matter. We will have to capture what we sent them, and if they responded back to.
So even easier for that, so let's say we even have a crime that's submitted on the friends across planes, right? In order for us to get that record, I would have to apply for a subpoena and get granted by a judge in order to have that information. Whereas our records, they're ours, I would just call social, Archive Social and say, give me those records. So that's kind of the way you've got to separate, so we can share it, whatever happens somewhere else. If if there was all kinds of comments there and I needed them, I would have to actually file for subpoena and have or order for them to give me that stuff. It's it's not our, it's not my team rights.
Right, but it's, oh, okay, Andy then Michael.
So you're saying that the social, I'm sorry, Archive Social records would be like something you can use to arrest somebody with?
No, I mean, that it's it's no different than now, all they're doing is saving them. So if somebody were to get, uh I mean, right now, if somebody posts something on our Facebook page, we could use that.
Sure.
As for us, all they're doing is saving it, just in case you get an open record request for it. Not, it's not for investigative purposes.
It's just for.
It's more for uh because of state law, it requires that we be able to respond to open records.
It's a library, it's does not produce any of its own stuff, it just records what comes across the site. It's a library, basically, electronic library.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, so we're paying three thousand dollars a year. To archive anything that is village generated social media.
Correct.
For three thousand dollars a year.
Yep.
Right.
To protect ourselves from.
To ensure that, yeah, to ensure that we do not violate open records laws.
Yes. And and you know, it the statute's very easy to read, it's really pretty clear. And all you have to do is read the paper almost every day where someone is going for open records.
Yeah.
I mean, we just saw it on this, the big investigation of voting, the judge ordered. The old Supreme Court judge said he can't destroy records, you have to maintain your records, it's part of the law, open records.
Yeah, and the and the thought of actually trying to keep track of those records makes my head want to explode.
Yeah, it is very difficult, I, like I said, I was in charge of the Madison Police Department records for two years. It's an incredible, complicated, difficult thing, and I didn't have to deal with the social media part, I can't imagine dealing with that.
I'm thinking, sorry, no.
Okay, Michael?
No, I.
Just gonna just share two quick things, I I did two follow ups with the gentleman, the representative from Archive Social. On two things that I wanted further clarification on. Um the first being if they had any anticipated cost increases that he foresaw in the coming years of which he said. They had done one just within the last two, so he was not in anticipating any um coming uh due in the next year or two. Um the the second one was what if the village were to sign a contract and then choose at some point to to cancel? What happens to the records that you've you've retained thus far? Um so he said that um you can export archived content at any time during the the term of our contract with them. And that's something that he will cover with us and how we can make those requests ourselves. Um but he said um essentially uh within thirty days after the effective data termination and expiration of the the contract. Um they will make our archive content available to us for export or download. Um and or at any time with a written request um after the thirty day period.
Right, Andy? So we have a motion, any other discussion? Let's uh do a roll call vote.
Steve Brennan?
Yes.
Justin Brown?
Yes.
Justin Gorham?
Yes.
Justin Hartman?
Yeah.
Justin Kowalski?
Yes.
Trustee Calbater?
Yes, President Lakeville.
Yes. So move. All right. Thirteen, discussion and possible action regarding a request from Leonard Ziegler to farm Outlet Four. Which is, people who don't know, south of P, we got that fourteen acres part of pre-crossing. He'd like to farm eleven point five acres of that.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All of both. All right, number fourteen, discussion and possible action regarding Glacier Ridge subdivision playground, Mike?
So the uh Arts Recreation Concerns Committee. They're also in the package, I thought three boards since they're authorized. Where is the exact location? Yeah, so this park is a point three acre park, it is, which is located on Beadner side. Ready in neighborhood, so it had been, to give you guys all the digits, always discussion about was there supposed to be a park here or not. Uh there's a number of changes that kind of happened within the development agreement to allow it so that it wouldn't be a playground necessarily at that time. However, they did pay towards. Um for a playground, they had handled the development of that full seventeen acres that we purchased. Um since that day, we've obviously had a visioning session with the neighborhood, uh discussions about what they really want to entail in that in their site plan. And uh obviously within the thirty seven thousand dollars that they had, that they collected in part communication. So since that date, since the visioning, since the discussion of the committee, uh the committee did recommend uh to move forward with. Burke, uh I'm sorry, Lee Recreation, which is a a Burke playground. Um Lee Recreation is out of Cambridge, Wisconsin. Um and uh obviously the budget came within fifty seven thousand that we have. The project. Were you able to look through the other options? Okay, we were able to see those, um I have them here, so I can look through them. But I, as staff, uh obviously we've sent this out, kids look at it as well, look at the different opportunities that we have to play with. Um the Burke one was highlighted by all of them as well. Staff's recommendation is to move forward with with Lee Recreation possible as.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the proposal for um Burke Playground through Lee. Uh recommended by uh Parks and Recreation.
Okay, I have a motion and a second discussion. Andy, go ahead.
Yeah, I I can just say like unanimously, like the whole entire conversation, it was, this was the one. I I mean, it was, there was no other option. Um and all of the members of the Parks and Recreation Committee. Ask their children and their friends and their neighbors, and and this was the one that stood out hands down. Um and we talked about like different elements, you know, we, the rabbit ears over there on the right, for example. Um but we definitely can, you know, uh holistically approve this. Um outside of the fact that maybe we need more benches for parents to rest their butts, uh so I'll just leave it with that.
All right, I'll just add that the the two people who who made the motion in the second from the Parks Committee do live in that neighborhood too. So they're not people from far away, they're they they were, you know, right next door.
Very good. Anything else? All right, all in favor, say aye. All both same, so move. All right, fifteen, discussion and possible action regarding the addition of pickleball courts. And repaving of basketball court at Bear Park.
Just like the proposals that were sent out for playgrounds, I've also done the same in regards to asphalt, was not as successful. As I was with the playground companies uh to receive uh a number of quotes for for asphalt. However, we did receive one uh quote from Bartelt Enterprises. Um very confident in their work as they've worked in number, no another number of other areas here within the village. Um and I felt like their price range is actually pretty, pretty much where we had projected in regards to what we thought it would cost. Uh to put these in, so as of right now, staff's generaling this project, as in myself, uh so we putting in the asphalt. Um I met with Nelson Electric to get a quote and we got to change the two twenty service that we currently have up there. Worlds Farid had added or put it in, uh we're gonna either put a gate in that area or turn the electrical box around. Uh as we gotta keep three feet between the fence and the electrical panel, so we'll be, we'll be moving that most likely. Um and as you can see, I kind of put together a projected number of what I think the rest of it could cost. Um I do not have quotes for all of this, the fencing is the one that's really up in the air right now. Um I've had a number of people inquire about it, but I haven't had anybody actually give me a number yet, so. But it, for the most part, everyone I talked to uh agreed with getting the asphalt in, that it harden up. Um and and then work forward with with the fencing after that, so they'll actually bore right through the the asphalt to put the post in. Uh that we don't have to worry about any concrete or any heaving or or um lifting of the fence, well, once it's in place. You know, we don't have to worry about the freestyle of that, so. Looking just to move things forward, we do have the site all cleared currently, we'll be doing some fine grading still to to date. Um but uh overall, it's it's about ready for them to come in and asphalt anytime we get some warmer temperatures here.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I do. I'd like to uh move forward the proposal provided by Bartlett Enterprise at the cost of forty eight thousand three hundred and eighty two dollars and two cents. For the asphalt project at Bear Park.
All right, do I have a second? All right, any discussion? Michael?
Um, I just have a question, in that forty eight thousand, that's decreasing the thickness. To three inches from three and a half, is that a good long-term solution? Or would it be better to, what is it, five thousand dollars to pay that to prolong the life of the and not incur labor costs?
So I I've talked to other other people about this, a lot of, so I put in the proposal for three and for three and a half. Just because that's what we usually use for basic numbers in regards to our courts or roads or other surfaces. This isn't going to have any heavy traffic on it, um they'll be coming in on two lifts, so the first lift will be put down within a binding. Uh in between that and then a a second lift, the second lift, being that it'll give time uh between the first lift, that'll be cooling down. Should be plenty hard for what we're looking to do, so they they actually recommended that we go at three inches, so they were decreasing our costs before I even really started. Um for the project, so I felt confident that um Jeff, our new public facilities worker, actually worked.
So I felt confident that, um, Jeff, our new public facilities worker, actually worked for, um. I think it was Panadol, Dolittle, no, one of the other for twenty plus years and I asked him about that. And he said with what we're looking to do, um, he doesn't see this being an issue. He said three inches, you'll have the same issues that you'd have with three inches that you're gonna have with three and a half or vice versa.
Uh, then just one other, go ahead. Uh, with regard to the electrical, so keeping the same service that's there should, we need it? So it's the same power, you're just moving the box to be in code or whatever, whatever you're doing.
Correct, just to stay within code. So, we don't actually use that currently. Uh, but I could see maybe, you know, electric, uh, having lights or something in the future, uh, in that.
Since it's already there, just keep it there.
And then Cody.
And the cost savings of that half inch is.
Yeah, it was five thousand dollar decrease. And so, um, obviously the space that they're becau, they'll be coming into, we're gonna have to ramp. Um, for the trucks to be able to come in and out right off of the pots in parking lot. Uh, because there isn't any other way for them to get into that space unless we had a large, uh, excavator or, I'm sorry, a large, uh. Um. Wow, a large belt to, to send all the asphalt over the fence and into their hopper. So that would have been a lot larger expense than for them to just redo or put in a ramp and then redo the landing area. So we're, they'll be coming in off of, uh, the, the entrance area that you come down the stairs. And that whole area will then have to be taken out and we'll have to add new surface to that as well. So that's included in this. So that'd be the forty eight, three eighty-two.
Cody?
In the future, would this be only a pick and ball? If there was ever. Relaunch the World's Fair in that area, so use, or would it be, or change that off? Or it's still being used in the service or?
So that'd be a village board decision, I think, on that point. If there were to be a World's Fair or something, I think the biggest thing would be not allowing the stakes to be. Drawn through the asphalt like that was, right?
Yeah.
Um, or coming up with another solution for such. Um, however, the nets are easily taken down. You know, there could be a large opening there, a large opening. The basketball court will still be there as well, so that would be to the far east of that, but, so no, I, I wouldn't say, say no. The electrical service will still be there. It would be a poor decision.
Right, anything else? Alright, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same, so move. Alright, number sixteen, discussion and possible action regarding the facility use agreement. Between the village and the cross plane stingrays.
I would move to approve the agreement between the village and the cross plane stingrays.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. We're at discussion. Any discussion on this? Is this the same as last year?
There's a few changes within my memo that I highlighted. Um, they deleted some time that they weren't using.
Right, I saw, yeah.
Yeah, and then.
But how for, for reimbursement's the same?
Yeah, reimbursement would be the exact same.
While we're in the discussion, I guess, you know, there's a lot of talk on facilities and parks and, you know, what amenities are. Just, I mean, one of the things I've got to encourage the stingrays and people who love and dread this is to.
Yeah, it is within our five-year capital improvement plan for feasibility study and we'll look into replacement and or, you know, reconstruction. Um, we're definitely to the point, I, on Thursday or Friday of last week, I went through it with a chain. That's a great way to find out if you have any hollow spots. And, and the plaster that we have in the pool. We have a lot of hollow spots inside that vessel right now. Which is okay until they give away. And once they give away, now you're cutting it out and adding new plaster to those areas. And right now, getting badger swim pools to come on and do that is nearly impossible, uh, with the lack of staff that they have and then the new facilities of the building. So it's been staffed to try and patch these things. So we're getting barely, that, we're getting a lot better at it. But we're definitely to the point where we're gonna, we, we really do need to start this feasibility study and understanding the costs that are associated with. A new facility and or, you know, putting some money towards reconstruction of the current one we have, so. I'd agree with you.
Alright, anything else related to this agreement?
They, they added the lifeguard, um, I guess, so they haven't had a lifeguard previously for personal practices?
The only thing I added to it was they must be in elevated stance. So last year we ran into this discussion that. Um, all their coaches are, have to be certified as lifeguards. Um, but during practices, they don't have staff up on chairs. And it's like, okay, that's, that's fine providing you're not a deep well. And they always use a deep, deep well for different age groups. So, um, I just added to make sure that they're up in chairs because I couldn't point to that last year.
So we don't provide the lifeguard?
We do not.
They do and we're just saying that you, they should be in a chair, okay?
Now, all of their staff, for the most, I think there may be two this year, um, are, are village lifeguards. So very close to their family. One thing that the board and or we need to start talking about or making with session, brought this up at the Park and Rec. Uh, committee. I know it's been brought up with other administrators, but, um, we. There's not really a fine line between the stingrays and the village, um, in regards to payment for staff. So, all of their staff are on village payroll. And what it looks like from someone on the outside. Is that, I would say Bobby is a coach for swim team and she's also a lifeguard. Um, it's hard to differentiate when she was working for the village and when she was working for the swim team. Because we, as an entity, are the payers of that. So what I've been trying to do the last few years is make sure that, one. None of the lifeguards and or swim coaches are getting more than forty hours in a week. Because if we were, you know, even if they work thirty hours for swim team, I'm trying to make it so they only work ten for us. Because otherwise it could look that they have, they should be getting overtime for when they work with us. And so. I know we get paid back, we get reimbursed at the end and we get reimbursed all their, their wages and FICA, um, you know, moving forward, but.
If I can, I, I think we're getting off, and I think this is a topic we need to put on, uh, but we can't, I, I.
Yeah, and I'm not saying discussion, no, I'm sorry, yeah. Yeah.
Say it again?
I said, nonetheless, it's perfect for the conversation.
I think the reimbursement and the hours have nothing to do with the, uh, agreement. And I think swim team should be here to be part of that discussion if we're talking about billing and stuff like that. That's just.
Look, we're in the conversation.
Well, we've had. Well, that's, that's fine at Parks, I'm just saying right now, we're, are, the, the motion.
That's fine.
Should be tied to this agreement. Now, if you want to put something into this agreement on that, that's a different story. But if we're talking about how we're running business and incorporating now, that to me, I think is a different topic. Absolutely.
Yeah, it's more of that, just getting you up to speed on kind of how that's worked over the years.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same. We will go to motion for adjournment. So moved. Need a second?
I second.
Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Mike, thanks for everything.
Yeah, thank you.
Stickin' around.
Yep.
Alrighty, not too bad.
Sorry about the, uh, Parks and Conservancy zone.